...for May 1st, 2018. I call this meeting to order and ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Trustee Cameron.
Present.
Carbonaro.
Here.
Daaney.
Here.
Gabrenia.
Here.
Hopkins.
Here.
Ranky.
Here.
President Wallace. Here. We've requested Pastor Andrew Weiss from Faith World Outreach Church to our invocation this evening. Pastor Weiss?
Heavenly Father, we come before you tonight very grateful, Lord, for this community and for all your many blessings and your provisions for us, Lord. And we ask tonight, Lord, for your guidance, for your direction, for your wisdom and your peace here, your protection on our community and those who serve and protect this place. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you Pastor Weiss.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Brings us to our consent agenda this evening. All items listed with an asterisk will be considered enacted in one motion, though we know a separate discussion on all items on the consent agenda. Is there anything anyone would like to add or remove from the consent at this point? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda which includes the following: Bill's list from May 1, 2018. The consent this evening will also include, under Police and Health Committee, E1, resolution approving the live-fire shooting house use agreement between the DePage County Sheriff and the Village of Bartlett. The consent will also include, under Police and Health Committee, a resolution approving of the law enforcement agreement in order number one between the Village of Bartlett and Lexus-Nexus Claims Solutions, Inc.
So moved.
Second. Moved by trustee Cameron, seconded by trustee Hopkins. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Ranky.
Yes.
Cameron.
Yes.
Carbonaro.
Yes.
Daaney.
Yes.
Gabrenia.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Motion carries. The next item we have this evening is approval of our minutes from public hearing and board and committee minutes from April 17, 2018. I'll entertain a motion to approve those minutes as delivered.
So moved.
Second. It's moved by trustee Daaney, seconded by trustee Hopkins. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Cameron.
Yes.
Carbonaro.
Steen.
Daaney.
Yes.
Gabrenia.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Ranky.
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item we have this evening is treasurer's report. There is none. Moves us to the president's report this evening. First thing, order of business for the president's report is the proclamation for National Police Week, May 13 through May 19, 2018. Whereas the Congress and the President of the United States have designated May 15 as Peace Officers Memorial Day and the week in which it falls as Police Week, and whereas the members of the Bartlett Police Department play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of the citizens of Bartlett, and whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the duties and responsibilities of their police department, and that members of our police department recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression or intimidation. And whereas the Bartlett Police Department has grown to be a modern, scientific, and nationally accredited law enforcement agency which unceasingly provides a vital public service, now therefore I, Kevin Wallace, village president, call upon all citizens of Bartlett and upon all patriotic, civil, and educational organizations to observe the week of May 13 through May 19 as Police Week with appropriate ceremonies in which all of our people may join in commemorating police officers, past and present, who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities have rendered a dedicated service to their communities and in doing so have established for themselves an inviable and enduring reputation for preserving the rights and security of all citizens. I further call upon all citizens of Bartlett to observe Tuesday, May 15, as Peace Officers' Memorial Day, to honor those peace officers who through their courageous deeds have lost their lives or have become disabled in a performance of duty, and let us recognize and pay respect to the survivors of our fallen heroes. Dated this first day of May 2018, I do so proclaim. Next item this evening under the president's report is the National Bike Month proclamation, recognizing May 2018 as Bike Month. Whereas for more than a century, the bicycle has been an important part of the lives of most Americans, and whereas today, millions of Americans engage in bicycling because it is a viable and environmentally sound form of transportation, an excellent form of fitness, and provides quality family recreation. And whereas the Village of Bartlett's Bike and Run Advisory Committee promotes safe bike and pedestrian activities on the village's bike path system, and whereas Ride Illinois is educating cyclists and motorists as to the proper and safe operation of bicycles at www.bikesafetyquiz.com, and whereas the Village of Bartlett and the Bartlett Park District and the DePage County Forest Reserve and independent cyclists throughout our village are promoting greater public awareness of bicycle operations and safety education in an effort to reduce accidents, injuries, and fatalities for all. Now therefore I, Kevin Wallace, village president of the Village of Bartlett, Cook, DePage, and Kane Counties, Illinois, do hereby proudly proclaim the month of May 2018 as Bike Month in Bartlett dated this first day of May 2018. I do so proclaim. Any questions anybody has for staff? Hearing none, we'll move on to the town hall portion of the meeting. If anyone would like to address the board, please step up to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Attempt to keep your comments to three minutes. Would anybody like to address the board at this time?
Good evening. Hi. I'm John Helenardo with Frederick Quinn Company. I'm here just to briefly talk about our progress since last month on the construction of the new police station. We are 23 days away from the police department moving into phase one of the project. And on the inside of the building, we took trustee Cameronaro and trustee Daaney for a walk-through just a little while ago. Carpet, doors, windows, plumbing fixtures, trim, wallpaper, all those things are being installed on the inside of the building as we finish tying those things up and then tying up the mechanical systems of the building. So over the course of the next three weeks, those things will be completed, and the building will get set up for moving by the police department. We're expecting the first delivery of furniture from the furniture vendor on Friday, with another delivery of furniture to follow the 18th of May. So we're moving right along with the progress. Again, it remains a very busy place inside, but the guys are, everyone there is working very hard and making good progress. So be happy to answer any questions you have with regards to the project.
It's been a couple of months since I've gone through that, and I was just thoroughly taken back in how much progress you've made. I cannot believe that, just the difference in the two months that it's been since I went through there. And you have a lot of work ahead of you to finish in the next 23 days, but based on what I've seen and the accomplishments you've made over the last two months, I have no doubt you'll make that in the next 23 years, 23 days. So I want to thank you very much for the opportunity to go through there with Vince. And if any of the trustees have an opportunity to take a look at that building before it's completed, you know, take advantage of it. You'll really be impressed. Thank you again.
I'd just like to say that hopefully at the appropriate time, Jeff Field, our project manager, and some of the leaders, the people who actually do the work in the field, will have an opportunity to meet you and get the credit that they deserve because the work is being done by them and they're leading the progress. So hopefully you'll get a chance to meet them too. Thank you.
Sorry. Sorry, you take credit for it. Take a wait.
I get to do that. Sometimes I get to go to dinner too.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the board at this time? Hearing none, we'll move on to the next item on our agenda this evening, which is standing committee reports. First standing committee report this evening is Building and Zoning Committee Chairman Hopkins.
Thank you, President Wallace. There is nothing to report on our building and zoning tonight.
Thank you, Chairman Hopkins. Next item under standing committee reports this evening is our Community and Economic Development Committee Chairman Gabrenia.
Mr. President, we have one item on our committee agenda today. In an, should I start? In an effort to help make the village more attractive to new businesses, existing businesses wishing to expand, and developers with interest in investing in vacant properties and/or constructing new buildings, the village board has approved a new line item in the budget titled Economic Incentives. We were, the staff presented this line item at the budget meeting on March 14th, and we as a board directed the staff to present a program with specific parameters for the disbursement of these funds. The staff is proposing the Bartlett Economic Development Assistance Program created as a reimbursement program targeting sales tax generating businesses. The program was presented to the Economic Development Commission at its April meeting, at which time the EDC recommended it for approval. I would like to make a motion that we, that I would move that to approve the Bartlett Economic Development Assistance Program in an effort to enhance the village's ability to offer incentives to assist new businesses, investment, and defray the costs of construction, relocation, or rehabilitation for new and existing businesses.
Second. Moved by trustee Gabrenia, seconded by trustee Cameron. Do you have some, any discussion?
Well, I feel that I should bring up that we've had some concern emailed to us and by a member of the EDC concerning some of her concerns. And I don't know, it's a very lengthy email. It's basically, do you have anything that you want to say with regards to this or not? I don't know what else. Just there were some objections. Maybe Scott?
I would ask, I would say to Scott that I, that I had had some questions as well. And I think that the person that wrote the email had questions in regard to specifically.
Specifics. I think they were all answered from what I see.
Yeah, I mean, staff is.
A lot of the concerns raised in the email were also raised at the EDC committee meeting. And some of those clarifications were added into the process. And I would also say that a lot of the concerns raised were about the criteria used to establish the rebate. And those were largely based on the metrics that the EDC had earlier created for our marketing program. So we've kind of looked at those, used those as a basis for the criteria that we're using here. Some of the metrics that we're using to kind of weigh the proposals, I think, speak to some of her concerns.
I just wanted to make sure that she felt that we least brought up the concerns that she had, and I knew that the staff had been addressing that all along. So, yeah, I think that's all I can, all I can expect.
For the benefit of the board, do you want to talk about that process at all? Does the board want to hear what that process is?
I read it.
I think just for the record, I think we should just give a quick rundown of the process.
Sure.
Well, as noted in the memo, the process really, really the main goal of this process is to enhance business development and intention in the community while at the same time hitting some of those key factors in the board's strategic plan as well as the TOD plan. A lot of other communities do have similar programs to incentivize businesses, and I think that the board approving this line item will really help the competitive market. As Tony would say, economic development's a competitive sport, and I think this really makes us a great team, and we're happy to answer any questions that you have.
I would just note that the application process has a pre-meeting with the staff so that the business owner can sit down with the economic development team and walk through their application, make sure that they're applying for things that actually fall under the program, help get their documentation together, and then that packet will go to the EDC for review, and they will make their recommendation to the board that has the final approval on the rebate. I would also note that it's available both to new and existing businesses, and we're taking those funds from the video gaming line item. So if you recall from our budget discussions, that's the funding source for it. Also, I would point out that this is, you know, a pilot program. It's our first year, and I would imagine that they'd be, there would be some tweaking following, and we'll see how it goes.
Thank you.
So what you're saying in essence is it's not automatic. It'd have to come before the staff, then it goes before review again by the EDC, and then again before the village board before any actions taken.
Would it come directly to the board, or will it go to our committee first?
I would imagine it going to committee. If you had some questions, then you'd have the opportunity to kind of ask a little more detailed, or if there was additional information that you thought you would need. So I'm envisioning it going from EDC to committee to board.
There's like a four-step process in, in all this?
Yeah.
Well, that's how we, that is how we used to do the TIF rebate program. That was the same steps. So we just kept that.
Thank you.
I would just applaud the staff. I know we had, as a board, requested some time back ways to earmark video gaming funds in a very productive fashion, and I don't know that there's a better way to do that than this way as far as economic development and the development of retail sales tax. So, very well done. Is there any other comments or questions? Hearing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Carbonaro.
Yes.
Daaney.
Yes.
Gabrenia.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Ranky.
Yes.
Cameron.
Yes.
The motion carries. Thank you, Chairman Gabrenia. Next item we have this evening, standing committee reports is Finance and Golf Committee Chairman Daaney.
Mr. President, thankfully, there's nothing on the agenda this evening.
Thank you, Chairman Daaney. Next item we have this evening, understanding committee reports is License and Ordinance Committee Chairman Cameron.
Thank you, Mr. President. This evening, we have the appointment of the village officers and the village president with the advice and consent of the board. That being said, I think the next item is the appointment of the village president with the advice and consentment, the consent of the board of the following officers, village administrator.
Those appointments should really be made by the village president.
Okay.
And then the board moves to.
So then we'll.
Otherwise, you're repeating that twice.
Okay, we don't need to repeat it twice.
Does anybody have any issues with reading them all?
No.
Okay.
Good.
All right. I move to appoint the following positions, village, or offices, sorry, technical. I move to appoint the following offices to the Village of Bartlett. Village Administrator Paula Schumacher, village attorney Brian Roz, village treasurer Todd Dowden, village budget officer Todd Dowden, director of Public Works Daniel Dingus, director of Building Department Brian Goralski, electrical inspector William Detmer, plumbing inspector Dwayne Burns, chief of police Patrick Ullrich, village engineer Robert Allen, administrator hearing officer Thomas Bastian, open meetings act officer Paula Schumacher, freedom of information act officer James Blazinski and Paula Schumacher in his absence.
I need a motion to consent to those appointments.
I entertain a motion to consent to those appointments.
So moved.
Second. Moved by trustee Daaney, seconded by trustee Carbonaro. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Daaney.
Yes.
Gabrenia.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Ranky.
Yes.
Cameron.
Yes.
Carbonaro.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. The next step would be that to move to consent to the appointment of each of the officers as made by the village president, and that motion.
Done that.
You did that.
We've done that. All right. Got, okay.
So the next one is the.
Designation, designation of the board of trustees as zoning administrator.
Which one is it?
So that's at the bottom there, number two. So you can make that motion. That is not the mayor's.
So we need to make a motion on that?
Yep.
All right. Then I would move that we make a motion for the designation of the board of trustees of a zoning administrator.
As.
You have the name, Jim Blazinski.
James Blazinski.
Second. Moved by trustee Cameron, seconded by trustee Daaney. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Gabrenia.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Ranky.
Yes.
Cameron.
Yes.
Carbonaro.
Yes.
Daaney.
Yes.
Number three.
I thought we just covered.
No, there's three more.
Excellent.
Where are we at here?
On the back.
All right. Now we have a resolution approving the professional service agreement between the village department and Brian E. Maraz and Associates, P.C. So we need a motion. So I'd make a motion that we have the resolution approving the professional service agreement between village department and Brian E. Maraz and Associates, P.C.
I'll second that.
Moved by trustee Cameron, seconded by trustee Daaney. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Okay, that is resolution 2018-53. Trustee Hopkins?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
Cameron?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
Daaney?
Yes.
Gabrenia?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. What's the next one? 2018.
Hey, we've only done this once.
Yeah. 2018-55?
54.
54. All right. Next item is I'd make a motion, a resolution approving the professional service agreement between the Village of Bartlett and law offices of Robert J. Kupp, P.C.
Second. Moved by trustee Cameron, seconded by trustee Hopkins. I should be giving people an opportunity for discussion in between these. So I apologize if anybody had any discussion. Does anybody have any discussion?
No.
Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Ranky.
Yes.
Cameron.
Yes.
Carbonaro.
Yes.
Daaney.
Yes.
Gabrenia.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
The motion carries.
All right. Next item would be, make a motion of 2018-55, a resolution approving of the professional service agreement between the Village of Bartlett and the law firm of Strino, Romello, and Durkin.
Second. Moved by trustee Cameron, seconded by trustee Daaney. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Cameron.
Yes.
Carbonaro.
Yes.
Daaney.
Yes.
Gabrenia.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Ranky.
Yes.
The motion carries. I think you're done, Mike.
All right. Finally. I think we're done. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Chairman Cameron. Next item under standing committee reports this evening is Police and Health Committee Chairman Carbonaro.
Mr. President, both items were covered under the consent agenda.
Thank you, Chairman Carbonaro. Finally, on our standing committee report, Public Works Committee Chairman Ranky.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have nothing additional tonight.
Thank you, Chairman Ranky. Next item on the agenda this evening is new business. Does anybody have any new business they would like to discuss?
I have a couple of questions or a couple of comments that I'd like to make.
The new, new business?
Yeah, it's new business.
Okay.
Right. The first thing is, is the Chamber, I found out today, the Chamber golf outing is actually the 21st, so we're safe for the artist's ribbon cutting on the 16th. And the Memorial Day Walk, did you get a response from, Scott? Did you get responses from the trustee on the Memorial Day Walk? Okay. And we're in on that. And I wanted to, I'd like to know, Hanover Township today, they had, it was called, it wasn't called Student Government Day, it was called something else. But they worked in conjunction with Screamwood High School. And I know that we used to do something like that where students would come to the village and they would have a mock village hall meeting and whatnot, and they'd do some other things with the village. I'm not exactly sure how it worked. But do we conduct that anymore? Do we do anything like that anymore? And if we do not, why don't we consider moving in that direction?
You're correct. We did do it a number of years ago when I was an intern. That was one of my projects, was coordinating that. What we have, now that we offer to the high school, or the two high schools that our students go to, is the Students' Police Academy. And we also are the pilot for Bartlett High School's STEM internship program this summer. So we have a few more formalized programs, but if you'd like us to do a student government day, there's, I always love to talk about what I do.
Yeah. Well, I don't know how the other board members feel, but I'd sure like to see something like that. I think it's a great way to have students involved in government, you know, and, and just, just to have them, you know, so they have an opportunity of learning, you know, what exactly happens here with the village. I think it'd be a great idea, so. But I don't know how the other board members feel.
I'm not sure what it would look like, but I'm all for it if it's educating young kids about getting involved.
Yeah.
We can, we can put together a program and have you take a look at it and see if it's something you'd like to do.
Would that, you remember when they used to have that, right? Was that when like all the kids went in the same classroom?
Yeah, that's when we had one teacher and she taught first grade through eighth.
What's Avery?
Anything else for new business?
Oh, I'm done now.
Any other new business that anybody would like to discuss? Any questions?
I do have a question directed towards Brian. In light of the fact we're talking about another gaming facility today in our committee meeting, at this moment, at this point in my estimation, we have gaming-specific businesses located in most of the reaches of the village, and then this one being proposed in the middle of town, in the downtown area. Do we have a limit on how many of these we have, or is there the possibility of putting a limit on gaming-specific businesses?
The short answer is no. The long answer, I had done a memo before that I would send to you. There are towns who tried to set some limits and were sued. One of the things is there's no good way to define those geographic areas. You could look at maybe so, you know, so many, a distance between them. Again, there's different levels of discretion that you have. You have to create the liquor license, so the board has discretion on whether or not to commit to create the license. There's the granting of a special use permit to serve liquor that they have to have. And we've modified our application process that if they're going to ask for video gaming, they have to tell us. So when you're voting on whether or not to create the license, you know whether or not they're going to apply. And they have been upfront and said we're going to apply because under the state law, once they have their liquor license, they're entitled to a state gaming license. And then we're hard-pressed to deny a video gaming license if the state has awarded a video gaming license. So some of these things build on each other. We looked at some restrictions when in the beginning we were very worried that we were going to have a slew of these. Yeah. So we require, you know, there were some size limits. We looked at commercial kitchens.
We could start looking at maybe requiring a commercial kitchen.
So one of the things that, we turned one down across the street in the same shopping center, and that was, I think, proposed by like an auction of A&amp;W root beer, and it was very, you know, microwave food. There was no real food preparation, off-site. Now, some of the ones we've had in town, they have a modified version of that, and they're fairly successful and a little higher end. But that particular one was not. And the board turned it down despite those things, and there was never anything more that became of it. So we've talked about various ways to amend the ordinances, but there are some limits upon what we can do. In just terms of a flat-out number, you can limit liquor licenses. I think you're hard-pressed to just say there's only so many video gaming. There could be, I've seen towns try and define an undue concentration, and then the, really the issue and the trick is how to define what's in, I forgot what the term was. It was in a memo I mentioned to the board before a couple of years ago. But the idea being there shouldn't be a high concentration in a particular area, and in particular, you know, you might say the downtown area. But, you know, that's something we could explore. And so the mayor mentioned commercial kitchens, and what we're trying to get away from there is just that, no real food, but try and limit it to people. And we did a map of where the existing bars were that could get them, because they already had that option, having a liquor license, and where potentially there could be others. And not all of our businesses that have had liquor licenses have opted to have. And not all of our businesses that have had liquor licenses have opted to have them. In fact, some have put them in and taken them out. It's not quite the moneymaker that they thought. So there are some limits. We could look at that again. We talked about options and didn't go that next yard, and it turned out not to be as big a problem as we thought.
And if we want to be proactive on the, on the, if we want to be proactive on this, then do we ask the staff to put something like that together? Village President, do you ask them to do that?
Well, we can.
So that we have a better understanding of where we are, where we're going?
Yeah, what we would do, I think, would be the best route to take is review what we've already researched, because we have new Board members. So that would be our first step in slowing down the race. So I would just suggest that when we're finished with our committee discussion, that the next step not be moving it to Board, but moving that discussion to the, to the committee again.
Okay.
About how many of these we're going to try to propagate.
Admittedly, when I looked last, it was a couple of years ago, that there has been, have been some things that have happened in other towns with them and things, so I would like to refresh that.
So we'll, yeah.
I would like that.
We'll make that when we go through that on committee.
Thank you.
Yep. Anything else? We'll be moving directly into the committee at the whole meeting after this meeting, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Trustee Danny, seconded by Trustee Hopkins. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Cameron?